I do not.
I do not have an agenda either.
Do we have agendas?
Do you have agendas?
Yeah, I'm looking.
I don't have one.
That'll be during my... What do you want to do it during your point?
Agenda.
Okay.
Is it in the back? I don't have one.
I don't have one either.
I got two.
Try to fix my...
I'll wait for Hector.
We'll have to share.
Appreciate your...
Is John...
Yes.
Right there. See if you are...
Okay, go ahead.
They let out a bid for some... My... I will tell them 125 came last month and that's the end of my report.
I definitely have one. Thank you.
I'm good.
Yes.
I've got four. No, no, I'm good.
I hope everybody picks that up now.
Yeah, April or something. While? Yeah. And the judge...
That's me, it's colored.
Yeah, I do.
And the...
Oh, you do?
No, I do.
You do?
She was a little upset.
That's right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, Dawa gave me... So more second. She left it on my desk.
We're waiting on Jack.
I took pictures of that in '20, but I forgot to get them developed. I did it in '23, which I gave you.
Yeah, I texted.
That's today. I did do it today. I did her today, but I forgot to get it presented.
Harold, we have a meeting to start. Come on. Are you good? Sure, why not? The March 2020 Brookhaven Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please remain standing for just a moment as we offer a moment of silence to our recently deceased residents. Virginia Bernaro, Edward Skinner Jr., Dorothy Horton, Gina Marie Michaelism, Sharon M. Marion. Thank you.
I have two quick notes. Council met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. The date and time was 3/2/2020, 6:15 to 7:00 p.m. The purpose was a personnel matter. And council also met an executive session after last week's council workshop. The date was 2/24/2020. Time was 7:45 p.m. to 8:15 p.m. Same purpose was a personnel issue. Anyone from public discussion?
Larry Childley, 421 Circa Allah Head Drive, Brookhaven, Pennsylvania. If you haven't read the sports page recently, I just want to say that we have two young men from Brookhaven, the Katka Brothers, who are going to Hershey this weekend. They will be competing for the PIAAA AAA state championships at 195 and 285 pounds. They both won the regionals this past weekend up at Salerton. So it was a great weekend. Garvey and I had a great time up there. All right. So keep your eye on the Katka Brothers at Hershey starting on Thursday evening. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you for telling us. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mr. Flicky?
Jake Flicky, 512 Chumble Boulevard. I'm up here. We have a presidential election coming up this year. The primary is April 28th and the general election in November. I was going to ask the help of council and the borough for assistance manning the six polling places, the precincts in Brookhaven. It's a new election year. I mean, the main thing I'm concerned with are using new machines for this election year. Why the heck the county decided to come out with new machines for a presidential election year when the voter turnout is going to be significantly more? I have a card, you know, of the sample machine that they're going to be using. I've been online. I've watched demonstrations of it. I've seen more with instructing voters how to use the machine. But again, my main purpose is staffing the polling places so there's nothing out there yet how the poll workers learn how to use the machines. So I will do my part to staff as much as I can. And I'm asking borough, you know, the borough, the council to help out with...
What would the roles of the volunteers be? What exactly do you want them to do?
Poll workers. You know, you have a judge of elections that runs the precinct. Then you got the inspectors, a machine inspector, which is very important, as well as they call it a clerk. But you have five people. I'm hoping to even have an extra machine person with the new machines for the presidential year. But if you guys want to take a peek at these, I can give you a quick...
Sure.
Let me let you know. Tuesday, March 24th, 11 o'clock to 2:00 in this room, they are giving demonstration.
Yeah, I knew they were going to have some remote ones, but I didn't see one for Brookhaven yet.
Mary and I got it organized from the county, so they're coming in. But these machines were ordered two years ago, as far as I know.
It's also a handful of people that are...
It was mandated by...
My thing is, we need to be fully manned. I know past elections recently, it's not a presidential year. We're probably getting away with three people working the polls each poll.
Dave, do you want us to try to get volunteers to come in?
To come in and work the polls. You do get paid. You get... And I highly... I don't suggest they go to the training classes. I insist any poll worker go to the training classes.
Now, Dave, I got a question for you. Would it be possible, maybe we could utilize our camera? We can do an instructional video, put it on Facebook for people to use the machine?
Again, it's for voters, though. They're not going to instruct the poll workers how to use the machines yet. They have the poll worker, you know, demonstrations. It's the Thursday night before the elections and the Saturday before the elections. So...
Okay.
You know, that's what... But, you know, I can man some of them. I'm hoping Councilwoman Leslie's mother will man, please, will she manage? She's a seasoned veteran, so we need the people to know what they're doing, you know, working the polls. You know, if she has any issues, she needs more manpower, you know. I want to talk to her. So, you know, I asked Mr. Matthews already for her number and whatever.
I'll get it to you.
You know, I'd like to talk to her. But, you know, my main concern, I run the third precinct at Pastor Ben Griner's Parish. I have that one manned. It's the four precincts that vote out of here. One, four, five, and six that vote out of here that need to be manned. They have never been fully manned.
I think four is fine.
Four will be fine? Okay. Well, I mean, I know, but that's just what I'm saying. But six is definitely going to be a concern. One might be a big concern now. It's a turnover.
I know we have at least two people that are working.
So, but you need all five or even six, you know, to fill these polls.
Our party has two. You have to... We get like two people for each polling place, but the other party gets the other two or three.
Yeah, I know. I said, I'll do my part. I will do my part, but it's a lot. I mean, we can't get away with understaffed polling places for this election with a new machine.
What's the difference between the new machines and the existing machines?
These are paper ballots. So really, what it is, it's going to be a two-step process. The voter is going to get their paper ballot. If anybody's done an absentee ballot, they sort of look like that. They fill out the box and then they go to a scanner and feed it in. So it's like two steps to do it. On the back, I wrote out, there's more of an electronic version, but it seems really complicated. That's the name of it. I just wrote it on the...
Okay.
But that seems a lot more... And I guarantee people will be totally confused. And it's going to be, you know, when you're getting 700, 800 people coming out to vote in this November election, I like to be, have good manpower for the primary as practice, you know, for the November election. But anything the borough can do to advertise help. Poll workers get paid $90. They get another 10 or 15 if they go to the training classes. Like I said, they should definitely go.
Okay.
Judge of elections get paid 100 plus, you know, going to the training class. I haven't been to a training class in five years.
Okay.
I am definitely going to make myself go and make my whole team at the third precinct go to the training. But, you know, advertise if I ask around. Anybody in here interested in working the polls? We need help.
Have them contact you?
Was that...
Larry looks pretty...
I'll help. I mean, I don't know why our party took it upon ourselves to do it all the time, but, you know, I will help. I'm here to help. I know we've done it before. I know a lot of people that are already working, but, you know, we're in a transition.
Dave, isn't the judge of election, isn't that an elected position?
It is. That and the inspector positions. But you can put anybody in there, trust me. They want somebody to work the polls. They call curbside. They'll just grab somebody and say, you want to work? Sure. And they go on the pace. There's a pace lift. They go out to get paid. But, you know, anything you guys can do to help, let's get these... We need the manpower for this election with the new machines is, again, my bottom line. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else for public discussion? Mr. Schrednitscheck here? Anyone from the Business Association? No? Mrs. Dauber, you're not here for that? Okay. Mr. Hampton?
I spoke to Hannah Bank. His wife had an operation, so he's off today. Won't be here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I was already told Mrs. Ford would not be here tonight. She has another obligation. Chief Curtin?
Good evening, Mr. President and everybody else in attendance. For the month of February 2020, the police department, we had arrested four persons total. They were all adults. That's a good thing. Low arrests, hopefully low crime. That's our end goal, end result. We had two retail thefts. We had four other various thefts, two motor vehicle thefts from the borough during the month for a total of eight thefts, which is a low number. I'm happy to see that. 20 false alarms, 514 business checks or property checks during the month. We have over 1,000 year-to-date so far, just in the two months. So that's good. The officers are out there being proactive, doing as they're told and as you would expect. So I'm proud to announce that. 67 motor vehicle citations, 52 traffic warnings, 42 parking tickets were issued, 23 vehicle collisions were investigated. Regarding training, approximately 18 hours were undertaken during the course of the month. Myself and Ms. Fuller went to the workplace safety meeting on February 25th. We met with the Business Association, the mayor, Councilwoman Heller on the 26th. And Officer Wetton did some training on February 11th and 12th. So we're keeping our officers active for sure. Officers Subers, August, Eastman, and Barth, they all went to the Christian Academy's Night to Shine on February 7th, and we did get a thank you note from them for our participation. On the 21st, myself and Officers Martin, Wetton, Tuttle, and Teofilak, we all went to Coburn and participated in their Jump Rope for Heart event. So we got some good pictures and it was a nice event. It always is with the children. That's what it's all about. And I'll say that forever. And then Detective Havick came in on 2/27 and had Cub Scout Troop 493 at the police station. He taught them about some evidence collection procedures. So he had them definitely tuned in with that presentation. So that's all I have to report for the month of February, unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you very much. Chief Montella?
Good evening. Brookhaven Fire Company's February 2020 fire report. Two fire incidents in the borough, 16 non-fire, 23 calls for mutual aid, five drills for a total of 46. Answered 110 calls so far this year for service. No loss on structure or contents for the month in the borough. No firefighter injuries. Our manpower was 46 calls, average of 15 firefighters. We had 722 personnel hours logged for the month, 1,636 for the year. Our training sessions, we had 530 average firefighters per training session, 405 hours of training logged for the month, 645 for the year. Brookhaven Fire Company responded to following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. Three automatic fire alarms in the borough. We had accidents at 33298 Edgemont Avenue. We had another one at Upland Road and Tom Sawini Drive. We had an accident at 200 block Upland Road and also an accident at Burgess Wood Road and Brookhaven Road. Assisted Upland Fire Company on a building fire at 410 10th Street and also a building fire at 501 West 24th Street. Assisted Chester Township on a building fire at 14th and Townsend Street and an accident with entrapment at Conker Road and Commerce Drive. Assisted Aston Township Fire Department on a building fire at Bent Lane. And we assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire at 300 South Pennell Road. Brookhaven Fire Company assisted Garden City Fire Department on a building fire at the Saybrook Lane condominiums or condos. Assisted the Prospect Park Fire Company on a second alarm building fire on 13th Avenue. Our fire and EMS monthly training involved firefighter survival, SCBA air management, forcible entry with rescuing a victim and going through mayday procedures on rescues. We had hazmat operations, operational level yearly refresher, and we also had CPR AED recertification for 30 members. And we also had three borough officials attend that CPR class as well. Our ambulance report for February 2020, we had 139 total calls, 44 BLS transports, 52 ALS transports, 91 calls in Brookhaven Borough, 14 in Chester City, eight in Media, seven in Middletown Township, seven in Upland Borough, six in Nether Providence Township, two in Chester Township, one in Aston, one in Springfield Township, and one in Concordville. And we had 14 second emergencies as well for the month. That completes the report.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Solicitors' report, Mr. Wills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First issue concerns the property at 123 East Brookhaven Road. Judge Kelly Echol of the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas had issued an order dated January the 28th of 2020 mandating the property owner to remove all trash, debris, and junk from the property within 20 days and in default thereof authorizing the borough to enter upon the property and abate the nuisance and further authorizing the borough to file appropriate municipal liens against the property owner for all costs that may incur therewith. To date, the property owner has not yet abated the nuisance. However, the property is scheduled for sale, as I understand it, next week. And the new proposed owner, who owns and operates a clean-out company, has given assurances to the borough that it will, in fact, abate the nuisance upon acquiring title to the property. I did receive a quote from ADU Services with regard to their clean-out cost to abate the nuisance. That estimate was approximately $6,250. In light of the high cost, I recommend it to the borough that they defer retaining ADU at this time and permitting the new proposed property owner to abate the nuisance. If the new owner obviously fails to do so, the borough, of course, can authorize ADU to abate the nuisance and then municipally lien the property owner for all fees and costs associated therewith. Second item concerns 4209-4213 Edgemont Avenue, commonly referred to as Carman's. Again, this is a commercial property which has been blighted for many years. The conservator appointed by the court under the Abandoned and Blighted Property Conservation Act filed a motion with the court on February the 12th to order the sale of the property. A hearing on the said motion occurred today, for which I was in attendance to express the borough's support of the motion and to ensure that all fees and costs incurred by the borough throughout this process were considered by the court when defining the terms and conditions of the sale. The property owner did, in fact, appear at the court hearing to articulate his opposition to the sale of the property. The court took the motion under advisement. I fully expect a ruling later this month. And in light of the very compelling underlying facts of this case and the applicable law, I remain cautiously optimistic that the court will, in fact, grant the motion and order the sale of the property. With regard to the work being done at Carman's, I did receive an updated report from the conservator, and he has responded as follows. Work is progressing on schedule. We've completed roof repairs. The subfloor, sub-support joists, and stairs have all been replaced and repaired. The electrical permit should be issued this week. The only remaining work to be done is electrical and asphalt repairs. Work is progressing, and again, I expect the sale of this property to occur later this month. Third item concerns 3607 Victor Avenue. Again, this is a residential property where the owner has accumulated a large amount of trash, debris, primarily in the rear yard. On February 10th, I filed on behalf of the borough a complaint in equity and a petition for preliminary injunction, again, asking the court to take immediate action against the property owner. The court has not scheduled a hearing until the borough affects personal service of the legal documents upon the property owner. Again, I have commissioned the efforts of the Pennsylvania State Constable to affect service, all to no avail. He has visited the property on no less than 10 occasions, again, being unsuccessful in making personal service. I know the zoning officer and the police department have likewise attempted to affect service on the property owner, all unsuccessful. In response thereto, I filed this week a petition requesting alternate service of process so that we could simply tape and/or affix the legal documents to the front door of the residence. Again, I expect a ruling by the court shortly, and I am, again, cautiously optimistic of a favorable result. Third item concerns notice I received just this week of an appeal. A notice actually from the District Attorney's Office indicating a property owner had appealed his summary conviction in the local Brookhaven District Court. Again, this is for violation of the International Property Maintenance Code. That case is scheduled for a trial de novo, or what we call a new hearing, at the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas on April the 21st. I have spoken with the code enforcement officer, and we will be prepared to prosecute that case and that citation at that time. Fifth item concerns the new bidding thresholds in effect. The Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry has published the municipal bidding thresholds for 2020. Under Act 90 of 2011, the bidding thresholds provide for an annual inflation adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index. New bidding thresholds for boroughs have taken effect as of January 1st, and they are as follows. Number one, purchases and contracts below $11,300 require no formal bidding or written or telephonic quotations. Purchases and contracts between $11,300 and $21,000 will require at least three minimum written or telephonic quotations. And again, purchases and contracts over $21,000 will require formal bidding, which, of course, requires advertising in the newspaper of general circulation. Finally, Mr. President, I want to advise borough council that there is a FEMA-funded residential property voluntary buyout program for properties that experience chronic flooding. We have a property right here in the borough of Parkside situated at 4935 Chester Creek Road, who has expressed an interest in participating in the program. This program would require the borough to sponsor the buyout, and therefore, a letter of interest is required to initiate the project with FEMA. And therefore, if it is the pleasure of borough council, a motion would be in order to obviously consider a submission of a letter of interest to the FEMA authorities. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is the motion...
Just a second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carrie?
And let's explain one more time that this is a property that experienced multiple flood events. In this case, FEMA will buy out the property at, what, an 80% rate? And the state will buy out the remaining 20%, and they will pay to remove the property, remove the house and all the structures, and give it over to the borough as, I guess, open space, you would call it. So no cost to the borough.
That is correct. That is the most important...
Three-quarter acre property next to the swim club.
That is, in fact, the most important element of this project is that, as the council president indicate, generally, 80% of the funds would come from the federal government. 20% of the funds would come from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and no taxpayer funds would be utilized to acquire title to this real estate. And again, because it experiences flooding, it simply would be used for recreational and/or open space. And that is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Mayor?
I have no new updates this evening.
Mr. Vaskis?
Good evening. Hope everybody enjoyed the beautiful day we had today. I had a very busy month this February with Public Works. We had two sewer calls, one at 3755 Susan Lane. Problem was on the homeowner, and it was remedied. The second was at 244 Swiftwater Lane. They plunged the issue and cleared the block lateral for the homeowner. Next thing, we had two sinkholes, one at 414 Edwards that was filled with stone. We're looking into the cause of that and what we can do to remedy that. The second was 236 Mars, looking into remedying that issue as well. DEP was called at the sewer plant for the odor issue. They came out. There was no issue found by the DEP officer that has caused any alarm or anything. Next, we have the hilltop, the summit side of Memorial Park, where vehicles have been crossing over and kind of turfin' up the park. We're looking to possibly add some boulders in the near future. Still got to look at pricing, but just to prevent that vehicle access, so we don't have to deal with fixing the field again. We had some LED lights received for the sewer plant. When we get some free time, Public Works will install those for the plant. Raise security chain and reflectors were also added for Memorial Park. I missed that. The picnic benches were repaired, stripped, and painted for the parks. Let's see. They had two mains that were on... Two mains that were marked and measured at 3551 Edgemont Avenue and the 4100 block through the 4200 block of Edgemont Avenue that were marked, that we were trying to locate for a while now. They marked them and found them, and we now have them marked on our sewer map. During the workshop, we were discussing options for a possible lift. We're looking into that still. Need to see pricing issues and, you know, where we can find the best deal for what we want to aid us in possible tree trimming, cleaning gutters. There's multiple options that we could use.
Hero banners?
Yeah, the hero banners, replacing lights in the gym. There's a lot that we could utilize this lift for.
And we were looking at around June. Mrs. Sewicki and I spoke after the meeting about it, so...
Okay.
Is that right, Janice?
That's correct.
Okay. So just wanted to let everybody know that was discussed at the workshop, and we're still looking into it. Public Works coordinated with the fire department on updating the AEDs. They'll be returned back to their designated areas when the parks all open up. The walking trail retention basin, there was a pipe blocked, and the berm was washing away. So we got to... We're looking at ways we need to remedy that so we don't lose the berm completely. That's in the works.
Where is that at exactly?
I do not know exactly where at.
I think probably off of Whitley Road.
That's what I'm thinking. That would be my guess. So Public Works is looking into that and what we can do to fix that. We don't want that berm washing away.
That is Whitley Road. I misheard you. For some reason, I heard Durkin Field. Don't ask me why. Yes, it is Whitley Road. It's right at the end of the walking trail, the Whitley Road end of the walking trail.
It's right at the end of the walking trail, the Whitley Road end of the walking trail.
All right.
My mistake.
That's all right. You're human. And that is all I have for Public Works. For zoning, there is no update at the moment. Still waiting on Mr. Howell to work something up for us. And also, the budget committee was mentioned at the workshop. Hopefully, within the next two to three months, we can get something in the works and actually have a meeting. It will be held with council members, but it will be open to the public for them to discuss. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaskus. Mrs. Sewicki?
Yes, we do have the bill list for March, and for the general fund, the total is $41,104.99 for the... Yeah, just sewer fund, it's $10,041.96. And for the trash fund, it is $646, and that's a total for March for $51,792.95. And I will make the motion so we can have those bills paid this week.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Leslie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recycling, we will have both the shredding and electronics events. The first one is Saturday, March 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon over at Coburn Elementary. The police committee will be meeting this Wednesday, the 4th of March, at 5:30 p.m. And updates are being done to the emergency management plan. And also, if there are any employees that need their CPR recertification updated, please let me know so we can schedule a night. I want John Elmore to get us all certified. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Leslie. Mr. Pappas?
Thank you, Mr. President. The month of February, the workplace safety meeting was held. It was attended by the department heads. The purpose of the meeting was... It's a monthly meeting, and the purpose was to discuss safety ideas and concerns for the borough. Also, the planning commission has been scheduled for this month. I think the last time I attended a meeting was probably about eight months ago, so this will be interesting. It's in reference to discussion on a land development on East Brookhaven Room. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Mrs. Heller?
The Personnel Committee is meeting on Wednesday, March 3rd. Do you want to... Do we need to talk about it?
I'll do the motion during my piece.
Okay. The Business Association did meet on Wednesday, February 26th. The mayor, Chief Montello, Chief Carton, myself, attended. We got to meet some of the new business owners. We also discussed new mission, new leadership, and concentrating mostly on everything community-related. So, our next meeting is scheduled for March 25th, so if anyone's interested to attend, 8:00 a.m.? 8:00 a.m. The Holiday Parade will be meeting on Wednesday, March 11th, and that's at 7:30 p.m., not at 7:00, like I said last week, but at 7:30. Technology and Communications Committee will be meeting on Thursday, March 12th. Donna, you're going to talk about Ecode or...
What?
Anything on the Ecode or no?
I want to briefly talk about it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Together, ladies.
The Rec Board, for the Rec Board, we had four poles that were actually delivered from the Montgomery County Prison. They were free. There are four 40-foot poles that we're going to either utilize for the softball field or for the baseball field for lighting purposes. Right now, they are stored at the maintenance shop. They were free. All we had to pay for was the transportation from the actual prison to the maintenance shop, so I thank Public Works for coordinating and having that get done. The next Concert Series meeting is scheduled for March 10th, 7:00 here, so if anyone's interested into volunteering, please come up and join us. I did receive a quote for the fencing in the backstop, one quote so far, so I'm still waiting on two more quotes, but it's still under the price that we had discussed, so just waiting on that because that's a priority. And I believe that Public Works is still working on the scoreboard, right?
Yes.
So, installation of the scoreboard should be done hopefully within the next week or two, so we'll have that ready for the girls' softball opening day. I guess I have to ask for approval. Lowe's is requesting a permit for their outside lawn and garden center, which would take up a portion of the parking lot, so I was asked to get an approval for that permit.
They have to go through a permitting process for that.
But Harold told me that I had to get approval from council.
You do. You always do. We have to make sure it's for a short period of time. It's not going to take a lot of parking.
And what is it for exactly?
It's for their outside lawn and garden center. It's when they have the corrals in the parking lot. So, they're taking it.
So, you want the motion out?
I guess so.
All right, read the motion.
I don't know what the motion is. Do I just need to approve it?
Mr. Wills, help us out.
How would it go?
A motion to issue a permit to the Lawn and Garden Center-
For Lowe's.
At Lowe's to take up how much space?
I don't know. Harold, how much do they usually take? It's only a few parking lots.
You have a section in your code in those districts that you need council permission to do any outside sales. That's in your code. So, what she's asking tonight is for council permission tonight to allow outside sales for Lowe's.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you should allow it.
That's the motion.
That was the motion. Thanks, Harold.
You have to have the dates when it's going to be.
Fair enough.
It's limited to him.
Okay, fair enough. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Good job, Harold.
That was some advanced language, Harold.
Okay, so lastly, Mayor Hess and myself were honored guests at the Brookhaven Kinder Center, actually, Kinder Care Center on Friday, February 28th. The students at the center hosted a Black History Month extravaganza, so students from infants, toddlers, preschool, pre-K, school age, celebrated the victories of the past with song and art. It was a lovely event. It was very nice. We got to work and talk with the assistant director there, and hopefully, we'll have a long relationship with her. So, that was it.
Yeah, there was 96 children, I guess, from the ages of two to eight, and I guess only about five cried.
Yeah.
But it was a nice affair.
It was very nice.
Yeah.
That's the end of my report.
I have one question, Mrs. Heller.
Yes.
Did you say Tuesday or Wednesday for our Personnel Committee?
It's tomorrow.
Okay, I thought you said Wednesday in your report.
I'm sorry. It's Tuesday. I did. It's Tuesday.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met in February to discuss the animal control ordinance, and there will be some changes we'll be making to the ordinance, specifically the chipping part of it. We're going to be rewording that. The next ordinance committee meeting is Thursday, March 19th. Tech Committee news, I am still working with Ecode to come up with a meeting date so we can begin to calculate how much it will cost to move our ordinances on our zoning over to them to put on our website. We just need to do our due diligence to make sure it's not going to be too costly. If it is, we won't move forward with it, but we need to get pricing from them. And also, the minutes are almost all on our website. There's just a few that we're missing, and hopefully, I'll have that finalized by the end of this week. Rec Board events, well, first of all, please visit our website for the youth sports signup information. Signups are going strong right now, and some of our upcoming Rec Board events are Saturday, March 7th, which is Painting with a Twist for 55 and older, to be held at the Borough Hall Community Room from 1:00 to 3:00. Sunday, April 5th is our Easter Hunt and Pictures with the Easter Bunny. Pictures are at 12:00 noon, and the hunt is at 1:00 p.m. Signups will be the month of March, so happening now, during normal business hours from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And there will also be two evening signups, March 2nd, which is tonight, and March 23rd from 7:00 to 8:00. The Easter egg stuffing will be Tuesday, March 31st in our gym if anybody wants to come and hop out. I believe that's at 6:00, 6:00 p.m. for the egg stuffing? I think it's 6:00. Saturday, April 18th, the Opening Day Parade. The teams, the kids will line up around 8:00 a.m., beginning at 8:00 a.m. The parade's at 9:00, starting from Faith Community Church, and then as the parade moves on, they split. Softball goes toward their softball fields, and baseball goes toward Memorial Park. Concert in the Park series, we have an exciting Concert in the Park series this year. May 28th at 6:30, June 20th at 5:00 p.m., July 15th at 6:30 p.m., August 19th at 6:30, September 19th at 5:00 p.m., and October 17th from noon until 8:00. And that is going to be our Battle of the Bands food truck event. And I'm happy to say that we are working with some big, popular bands to hopefully have them come and perform for us, as well as Northeast Jazz and Steel Drum Band. And lastly, there will be a psychic event in the borough within the next couple of months. I know Karen Dolber's been working on that. We don't have an exact date yet, but as soon as we do, I'll be sharing it. Do you have one?
They ran out of room, and the psychics couldn't fit the schedule, so I texted you just while I was here. It's going to be in October. We're not going to have it in spring.
In October, okay.
Shouldn't the psychic have foreseen that happening?
Yeah.
And do we get our money back if we don't like our future? That's my other question.
It's a good idea.
Yes.
Okay. So, October, first psychic event. Community news, mark your calendar, the Providence Animal Center will be here on May 19th for the chip vaccination clinic here in our gym. And that's all my report.
Can I interject for one second?
Surely.
Just so the public knows, that Ecode would literally put every code that we have online into a searchable database. So, say, I want garage, type in garage, everything regarding that garage pops up, you know.
Rather than scrolling through effectively an image in your web.
Yes, it literally, it streamlines everything. It makes everything much more user-friendly, and it will be all the up-to-date codes that we have right now.
Sure.
And we can add in the future to that as well.
And I'm not saying break the bank on it, but it's a cost that we might really want to have to accept.
We're one of the few that do not have it. Mostly, all the towns and the county use Ecode.
We're going to have to modernize a little bit.
Yeah.
Donna, can I ask you a question on the borough website?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a section on there that we could dedicate to the Brookhaven Business Association?
Sure.
And, you know, we're going to come up with a, I guess they're going to come up with a slogan of some type. And if you are a member of the Business Association, their name will appear on the website. And also, they can, anybody who wants to look up ABC Grocery Store, they can just highlight on that, have highlighted on that, and we'll go right to their website.
Yeah, I'll just have to talk with the Association of Boroughs.
We did it a long time ago, but.
Yeah. We could do that.
Okay, good.
Mr. Catania?
Thank you. For my report tonight, a couple of things for council consideration. First one is to authorize a sanitary sewer repair. This is a sewer behind the KFC Taco Bell on Edgemont Avenue. Second one would be, I'm going to do it all at once?
Yep, let's do it at once.
Repair a waterline leak at the sewage treatment plant. Third one would be a storm sewer repair at 3533 Victor Avenue. It's a repairing of a storm sewer inlet. And then the final thing on the agenda is road salt. This is for actually next winter, 2021, 2020, 2021 road salt contract. Seeking authorization to participate in the CoStars program.
We want individual motions for these?
However you want to proceed.
Let's do individual motions.
I think we should.
So, read it off.
All right, so first one would be the sanitary sewer repair at the Edgemont Avenue, the KFC parking lot.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried.
Authorize a repair of the waterline leak at the sewage treatment plant.
Now, the only thing I want to ask you is, I know that when they go to pick up that dumpster, that's probably what's been causing that pipe to leak.
Okay.
Is there any way we could possibly look into reinforcing that so it's not stressing that pipe?
Yes, when we get it dug up, we'll be able to see if it has enough cover or whatever's needed.
Okay.
I'll make a note of that.
That's good.
Because I just don't want to have to fix it and then it come back again and bite us and we're fixing it again later on down the road.
That's a good idea, Hector.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Authorize a storm sewer repair at 3533 Victor Avenue.
Motion.
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
And authorize participation in the CoStars program for the winter season of 2020, 2021 road salt contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Catania, can I?
Go ahead, I have a question.
Mr. Catania, you might want to mention, I'm surprised we haven't received calls from a lot of residents about those little yellow flags that are all over Brookhaven.
Chandler Drive.
You want to explain to everybody what that's all about?
Sure, it's a PICO project to renew.
The gas service line?
The old gas.
That's what I was going to ask you about also, so.
That's what it is. It's a contract that PICO has to renew all the old gas, steel service lines.
From the street to the homes?
From the street to the homes, right.
Okay, and how many homes? It's 90, I believe?
104 homes in Brookhaven Borough are affected by the project.
I think you sent me a list of all the projects.
If you don't have it, I have a copy here.
I'll get it before I leave. I want to put it on something out on Facebook, so I just wanted to make sure that we had it all in one site.
They already started.
They started, right? It took about three months for them to complete the whole project.
Sure.
Each property owner was contacted individually, so if you weren't contacted, that means that your house already has their sinew renewed. Only dealing with the old gas, steel services.
Okay.
So, and.
So, Mr. Catania, also in regards to that, like on my street?
Right.
I'm not affected, but the hole out front of my house is being dug up where the yellow line is?
Shouldn't be, no. It's a small hole in the street, and generally, a small hole, potentially another small hole by the meter. And anybody who has a meter inside the house, part of this project is getting that meter relocated to the outside of your house as well. But again, PICO's been in touch with each individual property owner that is affected by it.
Okay, in that case, there might not be a need for a public notification if homeowners were contacted, so, all right, I appreciate that. Anything else?
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Catania. I have one, I have a question for Mr. Wills. I received a couple of phone calls today and texts and messages regarding the assessment. A lot of us got our preliminary assessments today. One resident was worried that his taxes would double or more because his assessment doubled. Are you prepared to briefly explain how this works? Or do you want to, you want to kick it ahead? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yes, in 2017, Judge Charles Burr of the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas issued an order directing the Delaware County Board of Assessments to reassess every tax parcel here in Delaware County. There are over 200,000 taxable parcels here in Delaware County. They include residential, commercial, and industrial properties. The reason for the order directing the reassessment is that the present tax assessments were out of whack. They had been assessed some 20 years ago, in the year 2000, and so, therefore, the court felt there was sufficient inequity among the various tax assessments that every parcel needed to be reassessed. As a result of that court order, the Delaware County Board of Assessments hired a third-party contractor to perform a reassessment of every tax parcel in the county. Their efforts are now beginning to bear fruit as everybody will be getting in their mail a reassessment notice. It is expected that as a result of this reassessment, approximately one-third of the property owners here in Delaware County will see their property taxes decreased. Approximately one-third of property owners will see their taxes stay the same. And unfortunately, approximately one-third of property owners will see their taxes rise as a result of the reassessments.
Is there any class of property type, newer homes, older homes, that it would generally affect more as far as an increase?
Well, it generally will affect-
Newer homes?
No, older homes, because these are homes that were last assessed some 20 years ago.[1755.66]
So much for my luck.
So, a new home that obviously comes on the market and is sold, and sold at fair market value, obviously that assessment would reflect that. So, in theory, all the new assessments are supposed to be tied to fair market value. And somebody may say, Mr. Wills, what is the definition of fair market value? Well, that is generally the amount that a willing buyer and seller at an arm's length transaction, right, would accept and would pay and receive for a particular tax parcel. So, the initial assessments are beginning to go out in the mail. This is basically the first drop, as we say. And if you are dissatisfied with that amount that is being purported to be your new assessment, you can obviously speak with, in an informal type of setting, this isn't a formal courtroom setting, anything of that nature. And really, you don't need at this initial sort of assessment interview, you don't necessarily need an attorney to counsel you and represent you at this initial hearing, but you should have some idea of what the fair market value of your property is so that you can articulate that to the board as to why you feel the assessment is improper. And it's my experience as an attorney practicing law in 30 years, generally, the people that will ask for a reassessment are only those that feel their property is over-assessed. Rarely have I met somebody who believes their property is under-assessed and then wants to go appeal that. So generally, it is only for those, again, that feel it is being over-assessed. And eventually, you may have to obtain, you know, an appraisal report if necessary. But at the initial hearing, you don't necessarily need a formal appraisal. But subsequent there, too, if you're dissatisfied with that initial interview, then you can take it a second step and file a formal appeal. And at that second step is when I would generally advise you to consider retaining counsel, somebody that may be competent, a real estate attorney is generally best. Somebody that maybe does divorce work or criminal defense work may not necessarily be the best type of attorney to represent you in a tax assessment appeal matter, but.
We got ours today.
Yes, that's why I brought it up, yes.
They're rolling out. Yes, sir.
Can I expound all that? I received mine today. And mine, just about double, almost a few thousand difference. So it's up quite a bit, but I was expecting, that was my house, it built 1927.
True.
That's great.
And also, what people have to be aware of, you only have 10 days.
To appeal.
To set up an appeal for this. If you don't do it in the 10 days, you can forget.
You can't appeal this number, you can appeal the figure that comes out in the July 1st mailing.
No, you can't right now.
That's not what I was told.
That you have to appeal.
Who's right?
On the bottom of the form, it tells you it is not a tax assessment or it's not anything, that your taxes are not going to change. Because what this just does is just to level everything out.
That's true.
Your county taxes are not going up just because of that. You're still staying at the same millage, or the millage will decrease in order that you stay with the same amount that you're paying right now.
Okay, well, I was told by a real estate, let me finish. I was told by a real estate attorney that the concrete figure is coming out July 1st, and that's when the appeals process begins. So we're going to have to clear this up and get it back out to the public.
There's three sections they're doing.
I think the letter's pretty self-explanatory.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
I have all that on my.
Did you get a letter, Terry?
Yes.
I got mine.
I kind of thought it was.
What do you know about?
I thought it was within the next 10 days.
Mail out Friday, Brookhaven.
All right, well, then we're going to have to clear that up.
And understand.
I was told that by a real estate.
Your assessment is times your millage, so your taxes are going way up. And where do you see what you're going to pay for Pendelco based on this new assessment?
Oh, that's comforting, Harold, isn't it?
That's true.
But the assessment.
That's not how it works, honey.
Cannot be a source of additional revenue for the taxing authorities.
So, quote-unquote, your taxes are not going to double, as Mrs. Sewickie says down the end. That's absolute fact.
Well, again, one-third of the property owners are going to see their taxes rise.
And is there a cap on the amount?
No, it doesn't rise, honey.
Again.
All right, well.
Each taxing authority, the school district, the county, and the municipality, right, must adjust their millage, right, when they get the full assessed value of their political entity.
First time I've heard that, all these newspapers, it's the first time anybody's.
Two attorneys, well, two attorneys today have said exactly what Mr. Wills just said.
Well, it wasn't ever in the paper.
I'll give it to her, I have it.
So that's the important thing.
All right, well, we're going to create a public panic. Before we create a public panic, we'll get the answers and we'll get it out to the public. As soon as this goes on YouTube.
A lot of conversations going on here.
No, but this is important.
That's why I have a gavel about to use.
Because we have to adjust errors then.
And understand.
Okay.
Nobody told us, I haven't heard anything from this.
Every year.
No, I haven't.
A property.
All right, one at a time, kids.
Every year, the property owner has a right to ask for an assessment appeal. So the fact that you may not decide to take an appeal of your assessment this year doesn't mean you're stuck with that assessment for the next 20 years. Next year, if you choose, you can file for an assessment appeal next year, in 2021 and 2022. So the fact that perhaps you refrain from taking an appeal this year, right, doesn't necessarily preclude you from appealing the assessment next year or the following year. Again, every year, generally, the deadline is by August 1st of each calendar year, one can file for a tax assessment appeal on their tax parcel.
But in 2000, when we did it the last time, they told us exactly how to do it, because I had to do it for the borough for the taxes that went out that year. And we had a formula. We haven't heard anything about how to do it for this year and next year.
We're going to get clear answers in writing, and we'll get it to Facebook, we'll get it out to the public, because, you know.
Well, I would like to know.
I'm sorry I brought it up to tell you, it's creating a panic.
Greta has something in regards to it.
I don't usually speak up, because I don't live here, but you know, I've been here for 20 years.
Sure, go ahead.
I wrote a story on this in last week's paper.
I'll let you see that.
Tyler Technologies, which is the company that is conducting all of this reassessment.
All right.
They held a meeting at the courthouse last week, so I can read this section to you, and this is what they said.
Chief, pass Mrs. Rogers a mic.
I can, okay.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The project, which was implemented through the county treasurer's office, utilized Tyler's appraisal and street imaging services, and included data gathering, verification of data, and the establishment of assessed values. Residents began receiving informal notices of their tentative property values beginning this month. And Miller, that's the gentleman from Tyler, said it is virtually important, or vitally important, I'm sorry, for residents to carefully review their new assessments for accuracy. If a property owner believes the assessment is not fair market, is not a fair market assessment of their property value, they are encouraged to immediately contact Tyler Technologies at tylertech.com/delco, or call 888-773-7056 within 10 days of receiving the reassessment. Informal hearings will take place from March 2nd to May 15th. Once the informal reviews are completed, Tyler will submit updated property values to the county in June. The county will then notify property owners of their updated property value in July.
Correct, that's what I said.
But they still have 10 days that they have to respond, beginning in.
Okay, that's.
With the first assessment.
Okay, that escaped me then.
Okay. Property owners who do not agree with the July notice will be permitted to request a formal appeal, which will be heard by members of the county's Tax Assessment Appeals Board. Formal hearings will begin in July. Both the informal meeting with Tyler and the formal appeal are free to the public. No assessed values will take effect on January 1st, 2021, and will be applied to municipal, county, and real estate taxes that year. Residents are encouraged to learn more about the tax reassessment project by visiting the county website. A website dedicated to educating residents and answering questions regarding Delaware County's tax reassessment project can be found at delcorealestate.co/dellaware.p-a.us/delcorassessment. So basically, what that means is that people can call. When you get your assessment now, you should call them immediately so that the assessments are reviewed for accuracy. The formal process does not begin until July, but if there's something that's glaringly wrong, then you need to call them now within the 10 days.
Sure, my question is, if you completely disregard it now, can you still then appeal the figures that are sent to you on July 1st? And that's what we're not clear on.
Well.
I mean, that's a big deal here.
The numbers, whoever said, who said that? Right, the numbers are not going to change, so, you know, if a person's going to have a question about it or object to something, they need to do it as soon as they get the reassessment on the property.
Okay. I was told by a real estate attorney that you would not appeal until the formal notice.
That's the formal process.
Okay.
But to start the ball rolling, you have.
So what, from what I, okay, all right, but still, from what I understand, you can wait till July 1st. We have to get that out and get it out to the public, because a lot of people are going to be asking, so.
Would it be possible to get the website off of you so we can note it on our web?
To do what?
We want to put the website on our website. Website address or the phone number, all that.
Sure, I can get that key afterward.
Yes, please.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Isn't that in?
Or we could share the article and put a blurb with that also. Mr. Subers, did you have something?
No, I'll try to pay your attention for her.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks for that. All right, that's all I have. Sorry to create a mini panic here. Mr. Leslie?
What about Roseanne?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more motion that I forgot about. Sorry, Chuck. I need a motion to hire Roseanne McGrath for the purpose of evaluating the processes, procedures, and staffing requirements of the Borough Front Office, Inspector's Office, and Treasurer's Office at the rate of $150 an hour for approximately a two-week period.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was it 125?
I thought it was, yeah.
Edit that motion, it's 125 an hour. My mistake. Trying to give her a little bonus. We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. And Mrs. Roseanne's first meeting will be tomorrow or when? It will be tomorrow morning, okay.
Yes, we're doing a meet and greet kickoff meeting tomorrow morning.
And who's attending that?
An email was sent out on Friday.
That doesn't mean I remembered everything in the email, Mrs. Heller, so who is attending that?
I am.
The office staff.
Okay.
George.
I meant from council.
I'll be there.
George.
I'll be there.
And myself, the mayor, the personnel committee will be there.
All right, fair enough. All right, Mr. Leslie, sorry.
Couple of things. Heart to heart moved out of the 4100 block down to the 3215 Edgemont Avenue. That's a home nursing care place. Did we settle on a name for Brookhaven Estates, Mr. Catania? Just curious.
Brookhaven Glen Drive.
Okay, is that what we're going to go with? So everybody's aware, Brookhaven Glen Drive?
This is, there was a request for a property address for Brookhaven Glen.
What was it again, Brookhaven Glen?
And in order to avoid, it had an Edgemont Avenue address, actually. In order to avoid confusion with emergency services, contacted the Fire Marshal, Fire Chief, and Police, and come to the conclusion that probably best if we give it a new name and Brookhaven Glen Drive, we'll have each building numbered 100 through 700.
And make it real easy for all of us, thank you. 3508, inspectors are going to go there Wednesday and inspect that, that's Dollar Magic. Elwin's still under progress over there, the adult daycare. Mr. Catania mentioned about the PICO. 4501 Edgemont Avenue, that entire property was sold. The inspectors will be there Thursday to inspect that place, and that is the Swiss Farm, State Farm, and One Main Financial. That place sold. Couple of weeks ago, we were kind of jammed up. The fireworks went off, fire chief arrived on location over at Our Lady of Charity. Refugees are back, they're not refugees, they're called, some are homeless, anywhere from 10 to 25 people in there in the middle of the, during the night. We don't know about this, the chief don't know about, the fire company don't know about it. Kind of got in a little shouting match with the guy that runs the place over there, but we need to know about this, so I'm going to get with the padre over there at Our Charity and try to get a handle on this. If they're going to be there, then inspectors have to go into that combat and bring that place up to code. We're there, like I said the other night, 1:00 in the morning, we got 15 kids in there and we don't even know about it. And we're going there with a single company response. God forbid something was going on over there, chief would have his hands full. So, working on that place, going to get with the other two inspectors and try to get that place up to code if those people are going to be in there. And they said they could be in there up to 60 days. So, that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Is there an existing occupancy certificate?
No.
I don't believe there is, it's the old combat.
Never got one.
The nuns used to live there. They're in and out of there, and also, I mentioned something to the police chief last week about it, so his people are also aware of it. We're going to have to go over there and get a handle on this, so this is, you know, it's just, yeah, it's sloppy. Especially come 4:00 in the morning, the fire company's going there with a single company response for a pole station, an odor of something burning in there. We think the place is vacant, because you've got 15, 20 kids in there.
I'm sure follow lines will hear about it tomorrow.
They'll hear about it.
Two adults supervising, that's it. Yeah, I know, Mrs. Boils over there, I saw her. But.
She's texting him right now.
We're going to get a handle on it there, Mr. President. We'll get over there with the inspectors and get this place up to code, and this way, the police are also aware of what's going on over there. But they're not refugees, but none of them speak English, they're homeless.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harold?
I was going to address Dollar Magic, too. The gentleman was in the office today. He wanted to open up tomorrow. We were checking to see if he had his COs and everything, and Matt was going through everything with him, and I don't know where that ended up. But he also spoke to me, I spoke to him about a general opening, and I'd like the mayor to contact him, he'll be there tomorrow around 9:00. If you would like to do a grand opening and all the nice little things, and get your picture in the paper and all that you like to do.
I can't wait, let me write it down.
But he was in here today. Swiss Farm, somebody contacted me a couple of weeks ago about Swiss Farms. I also talked to Ed today, the manager there, whenever we're going to do any expansion, and he wasn't, didn't know it, I just heard about it. Because if you know what the one looks, that was done up in Folsom.
Yep.
Quite a few years ago.
It's beautiful.
I have that in my file and all of the literature and everything else on that, and I don't know whether it's going to look something like that, because people that own the Swiss Farm, they also own the property next to it, so I guess they're going to combine the whole thing, take its leases up with the financial people and the State Farm, and they'll probably expand that as something looking like the one at Folsom.
That'd be nice.
I don't know. We don't have any plans or anything, all I know is they called, I want to know if there was any liens, did we have any complaints against them and everything, and I filled out paperwork and we sent it off to them a couple of weeks ago. And I filled out paperwork, and we sent it off to them a couple of weeks ago. And that's funny, I just spoke to the gentleman this morning, and what he knew about it, he said sometime in the summer, is all he knows. And like I said, in Dollar Magic, the gentleman was in, and I just hear now you're going to do the inspection Wednesday to get a CO and everything.
All Thursday? Thursday, inspectors will be over there.
I thought you said Wednesday. Okay, Thursday.
Wednesday for Dollar Magic.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, Dollar Magic. Okay. And so, again, he would like the mayor to set up something with him to have a grand opening and something in there in his store. And I met with a gentleman today from the Mayo Drive. He was going to move out of Brookhaven, but going around and looking to see the price of homes, he maybe better stay here. And he's on the Mayo Drive. He's going to put an addition on. And he was giving all the paperwork for the plumbing and electrical, things that he has to do. And I need the plans he gave me. I need actual dimensions on it. Got to do the calculations. He's in an R2 zone on what he can do, so. And so far, once February was on it, 25 calls. So, there's a lot goes on that, you know, you never know up here at council what goes on with this telephone and all the things that come in and stuff. So, but I'm all over the place. Sunday, I was out measuring property, doing holds and stuff for people that are doing things. So, there's lots of things. I have to go when people are home. So, that's it for tonight.
Harold, what's the fellow's name at Dollar Magic?
Mr. Patel.
Patel?
Yes. And I can't spell all the front name. It's in my office. If you need a question.
Thank you.
The address is 3508.
Thanks, Harold. Chief Motel, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one thing, real quick.
Sure.
We've got a notification.
Pass my mic.
Tonight from the 911 Center and Department of EHS Council for Delaware County, that they're going to give us some of them, and 95 MS.
Oh, good. That's good.
So, we have them.
Good. Keep them under lock and key. Be better.
What are we referring to, the coronavirus?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're going to do council meetings by FaceTime, actually, if anything breaks out here. One case in PA, we're going to do that. Mr. Wills tells me it's permitted. Anything else, chief?
Who gave it to them? Who gave it to you, Ralph? The 911 Center? Okay. That's because they're so sweet.
Oh, I have one more item before I call on public discussion. The Hometown Hero Banner applications for round three closes this Friday, 36. I think we're up to 65 for round three. So, and this will be the last round for a good while. We do not have.
Polls.
What's that?
We don't have any polls left.
We have plenty of polls left. It's just where the polls are and keeping up with maintenance. But this will be the last, last round for at least a year. So, and with special occasions, you know, if somebody comes in, we can probably take one here and there. But there will not be any open application processes. So, Friday, 36, it closes. So, if you need one, get it in, please. Anyone from public discussion? Of course, Mr. Dykes.
Of course, Mr. Dykes.
Tom Dykes, 305 West Brookhaven Road. Actually, I have two for Hector. One is, is there an update on what you were talking about with the sewer blockage on Edwards Drive?
As of right now, there's no update just yet.
I didn't know if you guys had followed up with the church or not.
We got kind of swarmed with the PA one calls coming in for the PICO project.
All right.
So, we kind of lost some manpower with that.
Yeah, they had 70 calls on Friday alone.
That's number one. Number two is a question about Eaton Park that I've been asked, that I asked about for two years. The water retention pond in front of the building has a drain. The drain goes over and the overflow goes right in front of the playground and into the area where people walk.
It's clogged.
It's just a nice wetland.
Is there a way that we can get that, that release under the walking path and off the other side?
We asked the previous engineer two years ago, and it was not acted upon. So, Mr. Catania can, can, did you hear me?
Do something with that, because it does create problems. If we can move the water to the other side of the walking path, I think it'll help.
It overflows into the lot also. Actually, it was funny. I was there one day. Two mallard ducks came flying in for a landing.
Oh, yeah. It's lots of fun.
It's a pond, and it holds the water for a while, too.
And it does hold, that part of the area holds the water for a while.
A lot of water.
We'll look into it, and then we'll involve Mr. Catania when.
Okay. The reason is because of our concert in the park, at Eaton Park.
We'll take care of it.
Just so everyone knows, our May 28 concert, it's a Thursday evening. It will be the North Lee Jazz Band and their steel drum band. So, we're actually getting the school district involved with the program, which is really good.
If you haven't heard of them, they're great.
And we are trying to get at least two bands that I know of that have residents from Brookhaven into the, into our mix of bands. So, we're doing that. If anyone's interested in helping out, we're meeting next Tuesday at 7:00 here at Borough Hall. Love to have you here. We're looking for people for contacting bands, volunteering that night, helping with fundraising, helping putting signs up, just a little bit of everything. So, just wanted to get that out also. Did I forget anything else? That's everybody. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else from public discussion? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motions.
All in favor?
Aye.